Inform the session and we'll start with our department updates unless we want to go to the preliminary consent agenda real quick so that if we have questions for Silas on anything that's on the preliminary consent agenda, he's got a couple of items that we can get those questions answered before we move along to our department update. Do either of you commissioners have questions about item one? Or item seven for Silas?
Item one is...
Eight and nine.
Yeah. Item one I think would give us share of Silas.
Yeah, that's...
Share.
Okay, that's that. So items seven and eight and nine. So those are the two leave without pay and the HHS contracts. Do you have any...
I just thought I had one more thing that I don't see on the essential.
Which one?
The item one.
That's the sheriff's office. Item seven, item eight and nine.
Yeah, so in addition to seven, I believe that I had sent over an agenda for another MMT provider consultation agreement.
With the Addiction Medicine Association?
Yes, Addiction Medicine Association. I don't see on the agenda.
Let me think that one.
So basically, it's the Addiction Medicine Associates PC to provide program developments for the eighty-two thousand five hundred dollars.
And not to exceed eighty-two thousand.
Eighty-two thousand.
Was it in the folder?
No, it wasn't in the folder.
Have it in the... No, that was...
Well, the sheriff's office agreement for the same MMT services is on today's agenda.
Similar.
It's a separate one.
Different contracts, but similar.
It's not the mail.
So this would become item ten. Do they have the same...
Yeah. Why don't you have a comment?
Yeah, this is the first services, most services. She is part of it.
Mike, do you want to take my copy and then just kind of give us the update?
I mean, I have to talk about it if I have questions. Obviously, I looked and didn't see the thing that I thought was one of the two.
I thought that the first one, when I first eyeballed it, I thought that was our first one for the eighty-two thousand.
So do you have questions about either...
Do you have any questions to Silas about this? No? Okay. All right, then we can make it item ten and put it on the preliminary consent agenda. Will that one?
What's your name?
Stan? Commissioner? Okay.
Yeah, then did you have questions about nine or any of the other...
Are you got commissioners okay with personnel items eight and nine and the authorization of leave without pay with you separate employees?
Yeah, I just think that we need to take a look at policies surrounding these requests because if this is the one that we were discussing, I had some concerns. This one, I don't think we can afford to see us review some of those procedures.
I read it, Mr. Bruce, because I think when I had an opportunity to look into it, you know, I think we need to make sure that whatever policies are in there, ministry here equally across the whole county. But this particular one, I think it makes very good sense to go around. I think we really need to get a policy counter administrative.
I think we have to have the ability to individualize the concerns. Somebody comes to us, we might have a policy, but we need to have some flexibility and also the, I think, right now, we're lacking the general guidelines that make us, help us make decisions like this. Anyway...
Commissioner, you just articulated the challenge. You just articulated the challenge, having a policy, but then diverging from that policy to make individual decisions. Not that you can't build some flexibility and should build some flexibility into our policy, but that is the, that is a big part of the challenge.
I think that, and I, with what you said, Christian, my only concern, and I agree with you, is that a policy is a policy, and I think there should be things built in to give us some of the flexibility, but the minute you start doing, taking that policy and applying it differently, I think we're going to yourself...
Yeah, it's a challenge.
Well, that is part of the problem with these leaves without pay is the reason we are having to extend many of them is due to the litigation that is now surrounding them. And the advice we're getting from city county insurance is why you're seeing more of these.
Then we take away the policy and we just make individual decisions.
I think this is a discussion for another...
Nice try. Nice try. I like your feeling about it.
Well, I mean, if we trap ourselves with policy, then it's...
I would highlight that we do have existing policy on this, the difficulties, especially in some of these cases, is when you start having the combination of the family medical leave laws, ADA laws, and, you know, which are constantly changing because, you know, there's court, you know, decisions at various levels of the court that come down, so you have this case law that comes into play in what it means for, without getting into details, but what's a reasonable accommodation, what's that extended period of time? I mean, that's constantly, it's moving, and that's why in working with our consulting with CIS and how we handle a lot of these, that it's not a clear cut. You know, that you could set a policy that we went through A, B, C, and D, and so we can approve this, because it's not clear cut, because each case and each circumstance is going to be a little bit different depending on each case. And it's a huge challenge, and I know Desiree's working really hard and trying to navigate that, so...
Well, and I think that can be covered in the policy is, I know I think it sounds too simple, but that basically says, part of your policy says that you will comply at that time with the current ADA requirements, FMLA requirements. If you, part of your policy says you will comply, so that way if those requirements change, then your policy basically, just for the fact that they say you'll be in compliance with those, then your policy automatically changes.
Which we have that.
We have that already.
Our current language and the CBA also has that. I know, it's the top one.
Well, we can plan on discussing that at some point, people of these policies, because they are kind of...
I just, I have no problem with approving...
This one I don't agree with.
So we have the preliminary...
I'd like to cease and further discussion.
Okay, agreed. Preliminary consent agenda, we're good to everybody?
Yep.
Thank you, Silas. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Silas.
All right, let's move on to our update. Yes, I'm sorry.
Could I inject something here? I asked out of the meeting here just to give him our meeting so I could introduce her and make sure everybody...
Come on down.
Knew her. The thumb of stone is our, our brand new, she's relatively new Sedcor, but she's also brand new to the Fenville, Oregon, or to Yamhill County. Her office is now co-located with the Fenville Economic Development Partnership. Jody Christians is the office. And as such, her focus, her dedication, her job is economic development, Yamhill County in all of its many guises, and we're going to be discussing many of those as we move forward, but I just wanted to get out in here, let her meet everybody, get introduced, so you could put a face with a name and know what, and we can set that expectation bar.
We already have. We set it as long as we can.
I can tell you that having met on Shark Tank, I was mildly impressed with your business intuitiveness, even though they were fake, fake shows. But anyway, I said, who is that woman? And, yeah, because that's your new Sedcor person. Anyway, so appreciate, appreciate you having me here, and we're looking forward to it.
Thank you very much. I'm really excited to be a part of the Sedcor team and to be working in Yamhill County. I spent the first couple of weeks just getting to know the great work that's already been going on and meeting a lot of the city managers and the planners and the partners and workforce development and other capacities, and I'm just so impressed with all of the work and energy that's going in to economic development locally, and I cannot wait to become even more entrenched in that work.
Just don't let Jody corrupt you too much.
Okay, I'll try so hard.
She's a good corrupter, but she's a great person.
Look forward to hearing you.
Great to work with, but thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you for being here, and I did want to make you aware that we're going to set up a schedule where at least quarterly, Abba and probably her boss Chad will be coming in to give us an update on the activities of the city economic development valley, so we'll be getting to see more of her.
Yes, we will be. We're working on that reporting structure right now.
But she's going to be so busy, she has, she's not sure.
I'll just leave some of these for y'all in case you need to get...
Y'all? Did I hear y'all?
My mother grew up in the south, and I adopted a few of them.
I thought I heard, I thought I heard y'all.
You did, you caught me. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so let us go...
Oh, I'm sorry. I said Abba, Abba Sha.
I hardly catch it when people mispronounce it. I'm very...
Because you must be so used to it.
Abba Sha.
But you know what? After I met you and I, and I got your card, I went and looked up what that name meant, and I think it's apt for you.
Oh, that's very sweet. Anyway, I'm going to leave that open ended, so the rest is...
And you'll have to go Google it.
Thank you.
Anyway, thank you.
Bye-bye.
The name means economic development.
That's exactly right. It means Sedcor.
Yeah. Just spelled differently.
Inversion. Okay, so do we want to go to, let's see, do you want to do Forest Service update? Yes. Come on down. Do we have enough chairs? We'll switch up to the table.
Well, my name is Debbie Wilkins. I'm the district ranger at the Hebo Ranger District. I want to start right out by giving you a business card.
Is there anything to say?
Yeah.
So you're down in office. Do you have to go up on the mountain very much, or do you get to stay down on the flatline?
Well, at Hebo, nothing's really all that flat there. But I've been the district ranger for three years, and I haven't met, I haven't come over here and met the Yamhill County Commissioning, you know, the board, and so I thought I would take this time, oh, yeah, pass that one around too, take this time to tell you what we've been up to over on the other side of the hill and catch you up on the things that we've got going on and see if there's anything you need from me now or in the future, especially as we start in on some planning that's basically in Yamhill County. It's some timber sale thinning activity, basically up the hill here, and so that's my agenda, my little mini agenda. I can go as fast as we need to or as short, slow as we need to. Three years I've been there, and this is the first time we're launching on doing planning in Yamhill County. We haven't started the formal process, so usually what I like to do is touch base with county commissioners' offices and the commissioners to see how you'd like to be engaged in a process that's basically happening in your county, and if there's any needs that the community, that you know of, that the community might need from that parcel of ground. So this is basically a quick rundown of everything that we've got going on that's adjacent to Yamhill County or in Yamhill County. And the project that I'm talking about is the first one on the list. There's the Yamhill Willamina Thinning Unit, and it's basically up the hill north of the Grand Ron Reservation lands. So it's all that whole strip of ground that's between the Tillamook-Yamhill County line and the Grand Ron Nation.
Do you have to compare up the side of the hill?
Yeah, do you know, this, this actually shows it pretty good, the very first, this thing right here. This right here is the Grand Ron tribal lands, and it's this whole portion right here.
That's it.
Yeah, and it's basically way up on the hill at the top of the mountain. And if, I mean, if people have been up there, it's basically from Little Hebo, the top of Little Hebo and the ridge line and the drainage that's the, poor Hebo up over the top there. So, so with that being said, you can just look at this paper copy, or we can, I can run down through these projects and describe to you the nature of the projects that we're doing, or I can, we can talk about other things. I also wanted to mention too, that I know that you might be interested, I know four years ago, you had a project with, with Title II funds that, I don't know how familiar you all are with Title II, but Title II has been reauthorized this last budget cycle with the federal government, and so we'll be having another Title II round that's, I think it's a two-year type of setup, so...
And that is dedicated to what?
So the Title II money is money that Congress has decided to set aside for counties to interact with the Forest Service to address issues that they might have with roads, trails, recreation. So it's, it's set up sort of like a grant program, and it's, the money is allocated through a committee. And so the SAEUSS law has one of those resource committees in effect, and I think there's going to be membership slots available on that, and if you're interested in learning more about that, I could come back and just teach you about how Title II works. But it was originally intended to try to fill some of the void that happened after the big timber sale crash, you know, in the eighties when the Forest Service drastically reduced cutting trees. We still cut trees on the Hebo Ranger District, about fifteen million work foot a year, but it's still a fraction of what used to come off of national forest land, and so it's meant to...
Still a fraction of sustained yield, yes.
Right, right, yeah.
I have a question about the Three Rivers project.
Uh-huh.
So when you talk about the National Forest System roads and roads and failing bridges on private land, how does that work? What's that connection between you and the private land?
So the connection is that the fish and the water flow up and down through, so this is a picture of it on the back, and this road, this red line going up here is the road, and the road's been closed for about, well, since 2007, I think, is when we had the big rains that happened and it blew out a whole bunch of bridges. So we're trying to reestablish a connection up here at the very top of that so that we can have actors back in and start rehabbing some of those bridges. The nature of that creek is such that we don't think it's a good idea to try to rebuild all those bridges. It's very expensive, and the only land that it's accessing is this, this parcel right here, this, this kind of J-shaped parcel. And we've been talking with the owners, it's a private guy who owns that parcel, and he's sort of ambivalent about keeping it, but he would like to harvest the trees off of it now. So we're working on reestablish this connection so he can get to his parcel of land, and then he's looking at selling it after that. And that is something that is worth talking to you guys about also, is how you feel about if the Forest Service were to pursue buying that parcel of land because of the nature of the problems accessing it, so...
So my question, oh, well, we talked about that a little time, but that might be something for discussion.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I know that there, there are concerns about that, and the, the guy who owns it is, sort of feels like it's a burden, and I think he's, he's interested in the Forest Service owning it, or he may go to the tribe, or he may go to somebody else, I don't know. But he is planning after he cuts the trees to unload the parcel somehow.
So, yeah, the only concern we have is the property tax revenue that...
Of course, he's on forest deferral now.
So what...
Yeah, I don't know his status with that type of stuff.
Wait to fill? Okay, we have to find her out.
Yeah, I mean, he doesn't have access to his parcel, and we're trying to reestablish it.
Sure, okay.
So without access, and with forest deferral, he'll probably not get much, if anything, off of it, and if he does harvest it and were to replant it, he stays in the forest service, the forest deferral. If he harvests it and sells it to the Forest Service, there's no revenue. If he sells it to the tribe, there's no revenue. So it really, the county has a little, if any, stake in that unless he were to be able to sell it to a private individual. And again, the forest deferral piece remains, but at least in the hands of a private individual, the logging, the sustained yield practice is more prevalent in that ownership, and the revenue generated from that is significant by comparison to anything that comes from the limited harvest that both the LM and Forest and State have got.
I have one question. So this basically looks like there's five counties, about nine fatal bridges or fatal bridges in the whole, you know, three rivers. And this is just proposing an interview that came from up above and dropped down into his parcel, and that normally happens. Does the Forest Service, or I know he's on private ownership, do the failing bridges, do they restore that natural habitat, take the bridges out, does it restore the natural habitat, or...
Yeah, we, we will work toward that. So it's been sort of in a weird limbo thing because that private landlord was out there at the end. We didn't have an alternative route in there, so, you know, we're, we're working with it, with him to try to, you know, provide reasonable access for him, but rebuilding all of those bridges is not feasible. It'd be several hundred thousand dollars, and, and the value of the timber that's on there is not several hundred thousand dollars.
So the long term is to actually restore that to the natural, that road wouldn't even really exist.
Right, and we would, we would slowly be working on that and finding the money to pull those bridges out and restore the habitat. It's a little bit awkward, that situation right there, because at the Three Rivers Hatchery, which is downstream from there, the Anadromous Fisheries cut off by the ODFW's fish hatchery. They channel all the Anadromous fish up until their hatchery there and take, you know, take the stuff there, but that still doesn't mean that there isn't viable fish, and there are also fish that get past their fish weir, so we, we have fish up in there, and we are interested in establishing an Anadromous fishery there, so...
So what would be the problem with going in and purchasing the property before the harvest, with the, and harvest the logs using helicopters rather than refiguring this road and pay for it with the dollars generated from the harvest?
Yeah. It would be true if it were big trees. It's not big trees. It has been harvested once.
How old does this stand?
Oh, it's probably, I don't know, between sixty and eighty years old.
Well, it's true.
Yeah, it's done first, but it's, it wouldn't make helicopter...
You're shaking your head, I just carried...
I think it's in like the thirty, thirty to forty year old.
Yeah, I think some of it is.
Yeah. Most private companies will land on a forty year on Douglas fir, as I, as I understand, that they're, they're thinking as they plan, they're looking at harvest forty years out. So that, but if we're talking Douglas fir that's forty, thirty to forty years old, you're almost there, it's a very harvestable yield. So I, I'm not telling you, but I just, in my mind...
Yeah, I haven't actually been to the parcel myself. I don't, I don't, I don't know. Their intent is, you know, I mean, I'm not even trying to tell them what to do with their parcel, so they can do whatever they want with it, but...
I hate to see us spend several hundred thousand dollars to rebuild a road so we can get a few logs out and then shut it down.
Yeah. Yeah, we're not spending several hundred thousand on this. We're spending very little on the road. It's just the beginning part there, at the top here, so...
Does anybody have any other questions?
No, I, this is very good, this is very good information.
But I would like to get some additional information on the Title II, have a clearer understanding of that, how it works, and who's going to, who's going to monitor those dollars, how they're distributed.
Okay.
I would certainly be interested in...
Okay.
I got a little summer to have a small work session.
You want a little work, a little work session in the summer?
Do all of us, you know, an hour, whatever.
Or did you have a PowerPoint or...
Yeah, yeah, we, we can figure out how to educate you. So what I'll do is I'll work with your secretary.
Well, then you're way ahead of everybody.
Educate you on this teeny-tenny topic, this indie biddy little teeny topic, but yes, we can do that.
All right, well, Debbie, thank you very much for coming in for the update.
Could you introduce your...
Oh, yes, yes. This is Alex Wickham. He is recently been moved as the lead planner for the Hebo Ranger District, and Tasha Counts is acting as assistant planner right now. She is probably going to get a job on the Ranger District handling our Newton Vanderburg funds and help us with a bunch of different planning types of stuff, so she's sort of a planner and trainer, I guess I would call her. Alex's background has been in timber sale layout and design and stuff. He graduated from OSU, what, five years ago, four years ago? Yeah, so he's a...
These would be very much good.
Yeah. They're, they're both, that's, they both have, yeah, service, service history, so we, we love them. All right, well, thank you guys.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming over.
You bet.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on.
Start by any time.
John Phelan, do you want to give us an update?
Maybe he doesn't, but I'm sure he's hungry to hear what my name means. She'll, she probably has already known it, John.
Don't press it on.
Yeah, you speak to them like where you can. You don't want to know what your opinion is for you.
John's got an update for us.
Saint John.
Saint John, yes, Brother John.
So listeners, what I was going to do, and I annexed it, was going to be a Christian who weren't able to do the Ranger, so what I'd like to do is start out with the building just so that you're aware of how these change orders are being handled. Here, you take that, I got one that will be revised, and I have quite the same information. What this is in front of you is a list of different items that we're breaking down that, as you can see off to the right, the prices are either at a point where there's no change or else.
Present screen.
The ones, the ones in the yellow are additional, and, you know, again, I'll remind you, this is a design bid, so like the rock building apron, the line sixteen, additional six thousand dollars. What that is, is we changed the elevation of the floor, plus we added twenty feet to the building after the bid time, so that's an additional. And as you go down through here, and I won't read each one, eighteen is the additional twenty feet, twenty-five is the windows. We went with a window that will open, the stone veneer on twenty-nine. Originally, we had just planned on putting a veneer up front on the tee, and for three thousand dollars, we thought it'd be, be wholess to go around building there, there's not that much left to do, so it'll look a little better. The big change is, is in the plumbing side of it. The sixty-two thousand three hundred and fifty, we've broken down with that to make it tails. Now, that entails some of it is a new bathroom that was put in at the end of the building, and when we thought the schmeckada was going to be coming there, so we had actually run up the specification to put that bathroom back there, and of course, it has to be ADA. So I won't go through each one of these, but I can assure you, we've talked this all over the hall with, and he's working with his plumbing, electrical, you know, each one of these are kind of explained. Number thirty-four, I touched on this at the budget meeting the other day, the forty-nine thousand nine hundred and seventeen. What this is, is originally we had built, bid the system with a forced air system, a heat pump. And through investigation and through talking to the people installing this, we felt that it'd be wholess to go ahead to it. Each room will have its own air conditioner and its own heat pump. There are many of these, a fraction of electricity that a heat pump would require.
Where are those small mini, you know, small mini heat pumps? In this, are they going to...
Is it like a Douglas?
Yeah, are they going to exist on the ground, so it depends, how many at the ground level, or are they going to be up in the attic, and where are these small...
They're mottled in the walls, and each...
Well, I know, but doesn't, isn't the compressor a separate base unit?
Yeah, you know, to be honest with you, Commissioner, I'm not, there is one compressor, but it's a real small compressor that sits outside compared to what we...
And that does all the rooms?
You can see where the fire sprinkler system, we actually had a heat up to twenty thousand or eighteen thousand exterior doors. What we asked for was is instead of lots, lots strikes, we'll have a car that gives another with those. The drywall, we changed that out, and you can take thirty-eight, thirty-nine and see the difference there. We can just put sheep off into it, so this T-bar ceiling. The floor, there was a substantial savings, there was a D-debt of thirty-two, thirty-one thousand nine hundred and additional fifteen thousand there. So what I thought I'd do... So what I thought I'd do is every month we'd bring that to you, just so that you're aware of it. Right now, we are going to, and this is stuff I, again, was gonna talk with Christian. If you remember the bid, it wasn't anything outside, ten feet outside the building, we were responsible for. We had talked with McNville Water and Light, they have foregone, forebode the vault in Lafayette Road, which are Lafayette Street, which has really been a huge expenditure of around a hundred thousand dollars. Now, we're gonna be able to put a single vault in and then it'll have all of our irrigation. And it'll have, it'll actually divide the water up to the users. Right now, Public Works pays for the fairgrounds, the sheriff's department, everything out there is, comes across. So this will divide out the users on it, which is more than fair. We are having an issue.
Well, look on the face of the sheriff!
Got tips attention.
More marge out there.
Give you a justice?
Oh, I'm sorry, give you a justice bill?
Oh, it does, it does, yeah. It is a real mess to figure out who is on what, what is on who. When we demolished the building, we thought that we had all the water turned off. And lo and behold, we've been, there's several, several different lines that they have, you know, through the years. This, every month I was planning on bringing you.
I've seen it.
You have seen it?
Yeah.
This is the most recent, I've signed this one.
I was just gonna say, could you put my signature back on it? I know I said that they should take my name off of it. Or at least make sure I'm routed on it every month, so I can see it.
Yeah, I have not signed this one until after the board meeting. In fact, frankly, all of these changes that I'm proposing have not been.
No, I understand, I, just so long as I'm in, you know, kinda in the routing cycle, I appreciate that. Thank you.
And this, this will tell you what percentage of each one of these items are done at. At this page two, there, it's column, geez. But if you look at that column, you, these are the, all of the chargeable items. If you look at that column, it'll tell you exactly where we're at on the project each month. So I will make sure that you get this, and then we'll summarize the other one. Now, I was telling you that McWater and Light, the water system does not look like right now, and it could change. I'm not gonna put that in stone yet. But we do need to bring in new electrical, with electrical for that whole campus. This is the way sizable is small, and what we need to do. So right now, we have a bid for fourteen thousand to install the vault and miscellaneous things. And then McWater and Light, the whole bid's gonna be about fifty thousand dollars to do this. It's usually forty thousand dollars to do it. So, and these are things that were not anticipated when we started first.
You know, John, negotiating with City Water Light, which I'm used to negotiating on City Water Light's behalf, one of the questions I'd ask, and if you haven't already, I'd ask City Water Light, okay? We're putting in this new service, that's not paying the service, that's gonna cost us fifty thousand dollars. What percentage of that is being done that they're gonna be able to get future capacity for something else? Because what City Water Light is known to do is they'll put in, use enough for us. But then if there's something bigger that goes across the street, they'll use that same vault and everything. And I don't wanna pay the cost for somebody else, so is that full fifty thousand, is that just for our benefit? Or are you doing it for someone there?
Well, and Commissioner, we did ask, and originally when we talked about a year ago with them, we were gonna hook on the Maggot Vault, where their power comes in. They're concerned that with any expansion over there, that they would not have enough power. And we could be wrong and appear to pay Paul, but of the situation. Our vault, pretty much is our campus, including the fairgrounds and all the buildings in our campus out there.
Which makes sense if that fifty thousand dollars is all for our benefit, if it services our campus. I'm okay with that, but if it ends up servicing something across the street, like where they added the apartments or that body shop or something back in there, that where they get the benefit now, then that's a whole nother issue. But if it just benefits just our campus, then I think it is what it is.
And I believe that that is true, that it only benefits us. You know, going down the road, that could not be a true story neither. But the transfer of armor that's there is too small for what we're, and that was always, even if you look back at the structural analysis of the old building, it was always a concern, wasn't it? That our electrical supply was too erratic and too small. And we had already wronged Peter to pay Paul, we had already ran from Maggots over to it. So, you know, it sounds like a lot of money, and it is, but it cleans that system up probably for the life of that property.
One more question on that, John, since we're upgrading that service, the service off damage, all the parts. Whatever else comes off that service. Is there additional capacity that's being put in that service? Let's say if we wanted to, whether it be a new emergency management building or anything else, if we wanted to build another building out there on the campus, that the size or sizes to would allow us to put in that other building?
And that's a good question, and they assured me that we would not, unless it was some kind of manufacturer.
Right, that we'd be fine.
We'd be fine, thanks, Tom.
Oh, go ahead. No, I was just gonna say, does anybody have any other questions?
Well, I think the only comment I'd like to make is, is I know, I appreciate getting this, because what I like to do, since this is a design build type of a bid, is if you look at our original, what was it, two million one or something like that, two million one eighty-eight? And we've got a net change of seventy-six thousand. I think that I figured that roughly about three percent, which for a design build, three percent is well within the bar. Anything up to about five percent is well within the ballpark. When you start seeing where you're making changes, they're at seven, eight, nine percent, there's an issue. But since these so far have only ran about three percent, I think that's very acceptable.
And you've gotta remember too, like the heating system, fifty thousand, there is a positive payback on that.
Oh, yeah, that's, and that's why I think three percent, because if, if you're only talking three percent, you're gonna make that three percent back, like on the heating system, over a period of the life of the building, you're gonna make that back. But when you get up around eight or nine or ten percent, there's something wrong with either the contractor level. Or, but, but I just, the reason I bring that up, because by getting this information, it's pretty easy to look to me and say, three percent, that's pretty darn, that's pretty darn good so far. And if it stays under five or six percent, that's actually, that is a job.
Every one of his prices, Commissioner, I go out and I research the forensics, I go to other contractors or other installers and find out what's for, whatever it is, and then I compare it to his bid. And if it is off, it's always been great.
Luckily, we got a great contractor doing it for this.
I'll give you just a real, unless there's any other questions on the building. Just a quick one, I know most of this, I gave at the budget meeting, that long presentation, and I, my forty-five minute one, no, without. The MIPs we have selected, and I think the muddy, muddy valley is gonna be the, muddy, muddy valley.
Ready map.
Muddy Valley. Muddy Valley is gonna be the first road down, and it'll be done before July of fiscal year. We'll be funding that out of this fiscal year. Fox Ridge is gonna be paid on Saturday now, it's the nineteenth. We will give them plenty of notice, we sent a letter, as you know.
Nineteenth?
This month.
That's Friday.
Should be Saturday. Paul McBrake's up and running, the contractor will start this week, actually, PG&E issue was resolved. The Young Bridge, they're building an access into it as we speak, there hasn't been a change order on that. The environmental concerns of using the concrete for rubble, so we had to make a change order on that, roughly about a hundred thousand dollars. We did have some money, of course, right after the budget meeting come in, the payment money for a hundred and twelve thousand. That was from the flood of two thousand and fifteen. Gracie's Landing also funded their portion of Shaillam and North Valley at eighty-seven thousand. We are going out, as we speak, for bids on asphalt, rock, trucking. We still need the one on the Royal Street, and then we're, we're clean from there. We did several letters out to Kim's Grade and Carmichael, Commissioner, and I sent them out. So they're aware, I've actually stopped talking to several people up there, so they're very excited about it. And I think that's, I'll ask you to get some questions.
Questions?
No, great, great.
Thank you, John, appreciate it.
Thirty miles of pavement this year?
It's closer to thirty-five, kind of more than what it now is.
Which is, so you think it.
That's pretty, pretty ambitious. Well, thank you, John.
Just a piece of cake for John. It's the whole cake.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
We'll let you know what your bill is next month.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Well, it's times, without any further delay, for our Sheriff, Sheriff James Spencer. Thank you, thanks, John.
So I thought we'd do a follow-up conversation on the Norcore. That was my intent of, as you know, we went out and took a tour of the facility out there in the dells. And Commissioner Olson and I walked through and listened to them talk about, they're saying some, in the middle of putting together all the info on the survey email that they sent out, asking about stuff. And I'll let the Commissioner talk to his piece, but the, for the most important part that I wanted to let you guys know about is just the mere fact of being there and seeing some of the different types of functions that they do. The way the control room's set up, the conversation that we've been having about the concept of doing video visitation in addition to in-person visitation and seeing how they have things set up there. That's given us a lot of good ideas of how we can do things to further improve what we have in our facility. The one interesting part about this whole thing as we walk through is they definitely are under the, under the fire right now.
That's a good way of putting it.
And a lot of attention on that facility. And as I went through it, I was like, well, I don't understand about the big, of all the brave circumstances over that facility, because it's very specific in design capabilities. It's very limited on the number of people that they house there based off of staffing. And some of the things that they are doing, we're already doing, or we're doing better. So it was, it was a good time to go see how other people are doing it. Talking with the sheriff at Wasco County, he indicated several times that he would love to have the ability to have more staff or capacity for inmates. They have a hundred and sixty inmates on, on an average, well, every day. They won't go over a hundred and sixty, even though they can, they have two hundred and twelve or so in there. They won't go over a hundred and sixty based off their staffing, number of staff they have on hand. They have a hundred, but they allow for the four counties, the share. Wasco County, I think, holds, they get the most, I think they get fifty beds.
I think it was fifty-five, fifty or half.
And then Hood River County is the next one. And then Gillum and Sherman County share the additional, like, ten beds, so they have five. They are getting emails from the Norcore weekly, sometimes daily, asking for metrics. Who are you wanting to let out, so that you don't go over our contracted rate? The additional sixty beds are purely contracted beds, forty from Benton County and twenty from ICE. And if they didn't have those sixty beds, that facility would not be functioning. And they, their budget is roughly six point seven million for their jail for the adult side. And it's like one point two or one point three for the juvenile side. Comes out to just about eight million, just over eight million, I thought they said, for the entire operation.
It was eight point two million?
So, so it was a good time, it was very, it was interesting design. The design is very different than the way we do it. The part that I liked the most about it though, was the video visitation concept. They have to do it to do visitation through video, through tablet. And then it's all done in the main part of the block. They take it off that kiosk and take it back to their cell, it's only a telephone. So it's no different than picking up their own. The one thing that Norcore doesn't do that we do, is they don't allow in-person visitation. They only allow it to be over the video, which costs money. So we offer up in-person visitation, and we're contemplating offering up an option for video visitation on a, as wanted basis, if an inmate wants to pay for it, they can use it. But we'll always offer up their thirty-minute visitation in person typically. So they use video arraignment, very similar to how we use it. They probably use it a lot more efficiently than we do. I think they said everything basically is for the most part is video arraignment. And then they have trials that they do in courts. Part of the hindrance is.
Because of the shackles.
So part of our, yeah, part of our, I mean, it's, it's nice being so close to the court, but that's also the negative, is that in the court's mind, it's just as easy for us to bring them up for in-person, as opposed to video. For more courts, for majority of them, except for Wasco County, it's a necessity you have to do. So they have built it based off of a necessity as opposed to a luxury. We use it as a luxury and try to encourage video visitation any time we can.
We wouldn't call it a luxury, we're just getting more and more costly to move them, even though it is adjacent to. Now with these new regulations, it's getting very expensive, so.
But it is, I mean, we do continue to talk with the judges about, we have a list, and we outlined a whole list of every type of hearing that they have. We identified all the ones we felt we would use video, you know, video arraignment for on a regular basis. There's just a handful of the judges and some of the defense bar that will still say, no, we want them in person. And if they request it, then we have to grant it, so.
You know, one of the things going back to that, that I learned up there was that, what, do the same regarding if they want, defense wants an in-person arraignment for you. I don't know if it's because it's a separate facility away from all the courthouses, but there, that doesn't seem to be a real big issue. It's almost like it's totally, fully separated, so they accept the video arraignment. Where for us, I think, exactly what the sheriff said, it's like, well, since it's here at the same place, even though they have to be shackled, it's, since they're here, we want them. And if you take that away from it, but, you know, I guess from my standpoint, a couple of things I learned is, it's a fairly good model, but it's no place where I'd say is ready for prime time. It could take, based on their estimates, they spent almost eight years putting this together. It could be a ten-year estimate to put this together. The way they were organized, they had some good things that we don't have the luxury of having where we're at, is like their, or especially for the, on the juvenile side, that their master gardeners come in and they have a regular horticulture class. And they have some of the most, the nicest greenhouses I've probably ever seen. And then what they do is they take it around the farmer's markets, the master gardeners, and sell it all. It goes back to furnish money for programs. And, and they have a lot bigger area where they can do that, where we can't. I thought the other thing that was interesting, and maybe a little in there for ours, and the sheriff could probably speak to this, would be on the adult side, their makeup of the whole facility is kind of interesting. But on the adult side, they had a special ward for the people that have mental illness issues. Totally different furniture, different painting of walls, different facilities. More of a low-stress, light blue, more furniture type, it was still approved safety furniture. But it was like sand-filled, it looked more like real furniture to keep it down. And I thought that was an interesting, and, and they have, and the people that are in there because of their mental holes or have mental, related mental problems, they're not in them. thought that was pretty good. What, but what I was happy about, if anything, is on the way back to Salem, because I couldn't write it a little way over there with the sheriff. On the way back, on the way back to Salem, the conversation went from, this is what NORCOR does, and this is what a regional facility over here could do. It went from that conversation to more of the conversation of, well, gee whiz, if we have, not just Benton County, but we have Telomont County and Lincoln County, maybe we're overlooking the easiness, I don't want to say easiness, overlooking the capability of bed rails for everything. And it even got to the point where the one Benton County Commissioner that was there by the time we left and got back to Salem, she wasn't so sure that the problems they're facing in Benton County, that she basically said without any certain terms that she had her way, did start renting beds from Yarmouth County. Because they, they run almost every day in the week. They run fifty faster than from Corvallis to the Dells. It takes two people, and they're on the fourth land now.
Their costs are...
Yeah.
...save anything going over there. And I, do you think there's an appetite for getting that back?
We've talked to them. Every time we see them, say that if things aren't working out, feel free to come back. I mean, they've, I don't, I don't know the reasoning behind it because they can't house their pre-trial inmates out there. They can only house sentenced there constantly out there having to pick up people. There was two people there when we were there. It's just, I don't see where they're staying.
I'll tell you what I think it was, is if you take their commission as a whole, their commissioners, I think there wasn't a lot of research being done, like, you know, that pre-trial can't be housed there, only sentence could be housed there, and how many trips...
Go with them.
Right. And how many trips it would take, and what the real cost would be taken, that cost from NORCOR to house. And they said, good deal, we'll do it. But they didn't look at all those other things.
Yes.
And I think now, maybe they're, at least talking to Zandt and the Commissioner I deal with a lot, and she's a new Commissioner, is they're bringing back a look at, gee, maybe things weren't so bad, renting beds. You know, so I would be a bit surprised in here if they may not, because they're getting, they're even getting flack from their own community about their, their holds going up to once they're sentenced, you know, and their holds going up to NORCOR. So instead of a regional facility here, which would take eight to ten years to do anyway, I would be a bit surprised if they don't move back towards renting beds, renting beds. Because it's not what they thought, I don't think it's what they really thought it would be. But we are sometime in probably September, just to take another look, the group, and Patrick at AOC is putting together for the same group that wants to go, or even others, to go look at another facility that's in south of February, Washington. It's another regional facility, but the structure of that facility and how it's operated, how it's managed, is totally different than NORCOR. But NORCOR, the one guy at NORCOR did say, he says, a lot of their income comes from ICE. He says, that's a, ICE home, he says, that's an income that he says, they can count on getting that money every single month.
But didn't they redo their contract with them based on being sued?
Yep. Yep. So, yeah. So, but anyway.
So is there anything else for the sheriff? We don't want to keep him longer than he needs to be out there punching bad guys.
Yeah. The sheriff, I don't know if he'd have anything. One of the things I was going to report on is, and you can leave if you don't want to have that, that sheriff is on our EBDMI meeting this morning, and some of the things we discussed, but you don't, you were there, but you don't have.
So I was going to hang out for the IGA, just in case he has any questions on the IGA.
Oh, that's right. You have one IGA.
They don't have.
We already have.
We already did that.
She even leaves.
Okay.
Well, I'm crazy like Mary said.
Thumbs up on the, on all those IGAs.
Yeah, we just, we're taking it out of the sheriff's salary.
Not much, not much.
But not all of it. Only, only thirty percent.
We don't have much to, much to work with.
Only thirty percent.
Eight hundred, eight hundred ninety-nine.
Not exactly a windfall, huh, Sheriff? Well, thank you for coming. Appreciate that.
All right, me if you, when you're done.
Thank you, Sheriff.
All right, no problem. See you, guys.
Thank you. All right, we've got item E, which is an incentive agenda. I can tell you the topic of our discussion. And the first one is the discussion and recap of the Oregon Emergency Management Full Scale Exercise. And it was at the full-scale exercise on Friday. And that, for those of you who don't know, it was all of our jurisdictions doing a full-scale exercise on a mass fatality, which was, the scenario was that a school bus had crashed on Lafayette Avenue. So we had all the jurisdictions there and a variety of different issues we were looking through. One of the things that came up is that, as you know or don't know, that the responsibility for emergency management direction control comes from the Board of Commissioners. So how do we make sure that we can convene the group, even if it's virtually, and since the public meeting, have it recorded? So a couple of different issues that we have. Why come do the recording? But just, I want to familiarize you with ORS 401-25, and I'll give you this to look at, which basically, as the Boarding collaborates with the sheriff and the Office of Emergency Management, will then basically ensure the performance of all the regulations and department heads and different things like that. And so, and now, we need to go over some of that. And the Chair of the Board will provide the direction for the county departments. There's also on the back, if you look at that company with operations, just to see who, in the event of, in the event of an event, we start out with, or we go down to the terms of who will perform these duties. So if we can, and also, we did have a test on Friday of the emergency notification system.
Praise my wife.
Did you guys get it?
We got the phone call, and my wife was like, what's this?
So basically, so basically, that was a test. So we're going to have, since we have time to do that today, our emergency manager, Brian Young, will give us an update on that, the full-scale exercise. And also, if we can have a discussion as a board on how we want to be available, because if an event happens on a weekend, not a workday, not everybody is always here to be able to get a hold of everybody. So we'll talk about that on Thursday as Brian brings that discussion to us. So that's that. And now on to item two, which is the LIPSEC Staffing Assistance with AOC, LOC, and OHCS as a partnership.
Yeah, I think too, I think you both got information on, all the commissioners got information on that. We've had a request from AOC that I think twenty-five percent of Ian has an opportunity to work on a housing project. And that for about three months, I think it was, and that we allow him to spend that time. Of course, we don't have to pay for any of that time. It would be paid for. And it was basically, when it was first discussed, it was my feeling that since Pope County and Commissioner Pope was totally in support of this, that we go ahead and tell AOC that it's, you know, that we approve that twenty-five percent of Ian's time over the next three months would be used going towards a special governor's project, with Task Force Housing and the homeless and everything. And he, one of the things I asked him again this morning at our EBDMI meeting, did he really feel like he had the time to do it and not, not defer some of his other responsibilities with LIPSEC and EBDMI? And he says, yeah, he could do it. So it's one that I would totally be in favor of. But it takes a discussion in front of the Board of each county or Pope County to allow it to happen. So.
And I forwarded your email to Jessica because she hadn't been informed, and she was okay with it as well.
So currently, we split in half and half with Pope County. So twenty-five percent of this time now will go to this project, so twelve and a half percent.
Right.
Just for two months.
Two or three.
It says two in the...
It says two. It may be extended to three, but it's right now two.
When I spread that, the email from Mike McCarter sent, I thought it sent.
It's, it's two months. And the defendants right now, they're just not so sure once he gets into it, exactly what it's going to entail. What they may do is act, based on what they find out in two months, go to the governor and ask the governor to fund an additional position to carry on what the LIPSEC's...
Well, and that's what concerns me, about letting Ian go over there, because we still have him for another year. And he's, I mean, there isn't another LIPSEC in the state that would love to have Ian. I mean, he's made quite a reputation himself. And so I don't want to...
So it's just, right now, it's only for the two, for the two months.
Anyway, yeah, that's, it's a needed, needed project, and you need your best people working on it. And Ian's one of those.
So what about your concern?
Yeah, I think yes.
Concerned?
Yeah.
Commissioner updates?
Just a couple things. First thing, we had our very lengthy discussion this morning. We never had to, it was second hour of our EBDMI meeting. And the big item of discussion this morning was actually a, let me pull my notes out here, was actually, we started looking at our core principles, was actually our community outreach and communication plan. How that we notify and how to ensure that the citizens of the community, of the county, understand, because there's this plan that, like, in Port Metro area, where crime is just shooting through the ceiling. Now, we don't have that plan, but the feeling is, well, crime's shooting through the ceiling. Everybody, well, a lot of people don't have the kind of programs we have, that we're known for. So how do, how do, as a LIPSEC, how do we get the word out, you know, whether, kind of outreach? They started once years ago, and it failed. They did one meeting of some kind of a group, and it, to service of others, it failed. So the, we spent probably almost an hour this morning of our meeting talking about community and outreach and communications plan. How do we ensure that the citizens know that we're just not, you know, it's not, you open the roll-up door at the Sallyport, and you say, all these people, go, you know, that that's not what we're doing. Because there is that in all the counties and in the state. There's that implication that they've heard so much on TV about, you know, that, that they assume when people are let out of jail, it's just like, open the cell door, open the dorm door, open the door and say, shooch, now, you know, we can't have you anymore. So the big thing centered around the community outreach and feedbacks, or a group being head up by Robin, Robin Robbins, Robin Robbins, dog died lady. Robin, not Robin Robbins, Robin. She was big on the, getting the shelter, the dog, for, Robin Russell. She is now on LIPSEC. She's a citizen, a person on LIPSEC, and she's a graduate of the FBI Academy. And so her and the district attorney are putting together a separate meeting. There'll be the district attorney, me, Robin, myself, I think Jessica, one of the judges, Judge Collins, that will spend about two hours in getting together about how, how community outreach plan may work. And then it'll be presented back to the EBDMI meeting group. If that looks good, then it'll be out of the whole LIPSEC board. So that was a very interesting meeting. We started looking at stats again, and they're accumulating enough stats now where they can see the trends of how many people are released, how many people are coming in. Are they measure eleven cases, you know, are they drug cases? But even though you see the stats, the difficulty with it is, is those stats are pulled together from about eight different systems. Some are county, some are states, some are just, community justice sites. Well, there's no normalization of data. So trying to get all the data, Dan Nelson's spending so much of his time just trying to get all this data where it can be used. But so far, the stats really look, they show that the programs we're trying to implement are working. But one of the quirks that it showed, that they, they're going to try to figure out is, even though we know we don't want incarcerated citizens if we can all help, or on free release, we want to get them, whether it's a side-in release, or what we want to get them back out on the streets. And everybody agrees to that. But if you look at the stats, the stats really show that we're, we're releasing, based on two years ago, we're releasing less, and we're keeping in custody more. What you'd think would be backwards. But then we start talking about the type of crime, you know, are they drug-related crimes, are they measure eleven type of crimes? And that's the piece we're missing. So we don't know if there's a reason why that's happening. It should be happening, but it is, as the stats tell us, it's happening. So, so that was our EBDMI meeting this morning. Very, very good meeting. The only other thing I have to bring up is I know all of my fellow counselors have read it. You know, for me, one of my things has always been doing the long-term goal, or doing goals and objectives. And if you haven't had a chance, ask me to read the COG News, COG Newsletter, the front page from our great executive director at COG, and it says, "Goal Setting, Strategic Planning, Why Every Organization Must Do It." If you don't know where you're going, any road will take you there. And so if you haven't had a chance, it's a good article to read because COG, they provide that service for nothing, but COG recommends that every government or institution needs to do goal setting and strategic planning. So. And that's all I have. Manager?
Commissioner?
Well, per the request of my fellow board members, we are moving forward with developing a strategy for Yamhill County Tourism. And as I indicated, I am going to integrate that, hopefully, with Centor and part of their overall jobs. But to assist with that is, we have put together a partnership of just about everybody that would need to be a part of tourism, wineries, the hotels, the restaurants, the businesses, broad spectrum. We had, we had a meeting this morning, and one they will be meeting for the next three months, every other week, for a couple of hours, building this board out to approximately twenty people that will be representative. The letter that authorized Jeff to represent us at the Midland Valley Visitor Association is a big step, because now we're at the table. And the first meeting that Jeff will be attending will be Thursday. And he's got a list of things he's going to bring to that board to, that could be helpful. If you go to their website right now, Yamhill County might not, might as well not exist, and the individual cities within Yamhill County have, as far as their website would tell you, we have three restaurants in Midville. I mean, it's really abysmal. And so we need to get that built up. And so right now, the emphasis of this is to get ready for our next summit, which is June thirteenth, and place to be determined, because as we're building this out, we're hoping to need a facility even larger than the civic center, because we're hoping to bring in that many people to grasp what we're attempting to do. But anyway, and I'm going to invite Abisha to attend those building meetings so that she's up to speed on that. And, but anyway, that, that is moving forward. And I think it's going to be a real, we have a representative from the Culture Coalition there today. So we're trying to bring all the entities together to make this a county-wide thing. At this point in time, we're not, nobody's clear on, once we get this group in place, where this is going to mushroom to, and if so, how it'll be funded. None of that is, right now, we just want to build a structure and see where we go. So, anyway, just wanted to bring that information back to you, and I wasn't happy to answer any...
And he says June thirteenth is the next day.
That's the next big summit. Yeah, the, similar to the one you attended at the library. Yeah. And we're hoping, we had seventy-three, ten that, we're hoping to double that at least in the next one. So.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yep.
Real quick, I just want to leave you with this. Was contacted by some, I will not name them, significant community leaders. In Sheridan, there seems to be an ongoing transit problem along the river, out there in a rural area along the river, defecation in the river. We've got some pictures of that. along the river, defecation in the river, we've got some pictures of that, we have some significant drug activity. So the people who live near there and the folks surrounding there are concerned about what this has mushroomed into, and it's becoming quite a significant problem. So dealing with, bringing Sergeant Whitlow into that, and the sheriff, and a couple of the property owners, they're facing an issue that they never thought they'd have to face. There are people out there who are far from services, but have decided that this would be a nice place to set up a camp, and they are there. So just food for thought, and I don't know if there's anything else.
You know, one comment for that, I, I like that, the way you put that, because my biggest fear is for the homeless and the less fortunate is that, as McMenville looks at changing their codes about where the manufacturer or where the RVs can spend and where they can stay, where they can camp, where they can not camp, I think what's going to be, we're going to see is what we saw with, one of the things that causes influx into McMenville, it happened to, I think a couple of months after Forest Grove, or a month after Forest Grove implemented their new offices. My concern, what you say, Commissioner, is that if McMenville implements all these codes without a really good solution in place, what we're going to do is we're going to see this spreading to the sheridans, the avenues down by the river, you're going to see it spreading to Carlton down by the, the Old Lake. I think what happens, it takes the problem, also it doesn't relocate the problem.
What I understand is that this is a gentleman who is known to law enforcement, and he and his cohorts have been living along the river for a number of years. So this is nothing new.
Well, this is not a new one.
This is not a new one. It's an issue that's now getting more and more traction as more people, lots of drug activity. So anyway, so we're trying to mitigate that as best we can, but the bottom line is, is that the sheriff's office can only do so much because it's a buddy of private property. So, well, if there's nothing else, we'd agree to order, we'll adjourn today's meeting, and we'll see you guys back here Thursday at 11 o'clock, which is a different time for our normal, formal session. Thank you all.
Thank you.